I'll read the orders. Stand up for your place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, a little bit forward for public hearing for the additional appropriation to the aviation fund, the amount of $6,450.
I guess I should explain that. What it is, is we, you all know, we bought some new tractor last year. What we did this year was buy a new mower deck for it that's 15 feet, which is wanting to double the size of the old one. But we sold the old tractor and the old mower deck for $6,450. So what we like to do is take that money, it has to go back into the general fund, and I have to reappropriate it to the airports and communities that respond. That's what we like to do.
Any additional public comment? Seeing that, pose the comment on that. We need to suspend the rules for that, approve that.
I don't believe so.
Do I have a motion on the floor for the appropriation of the aviation fund?
So is that the ordinance 1-2024 down here?
On the Council, I see.
So we do have it under Council Act.
Moving back up, minutes from the April 1st, 2024 public hearing council meeting and the April 9th special meeting. About any chance to review those minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
So we're properly moved in the second, then we approve the April 1st, 2024 public hearing meeting and the April 9th, 2024 special meeting minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next up, we have a sewer credit. About $25.47.
Is that?
Can I have your copy?
Yeah.
And Miranda figured it all, and that's what it came out to.
I make a motion, then we approve the sewer credit as presented by Court Treasurer. Second.
So we're properly moved in the second, and we approve sewer credit for a gap 2.001, 0.01, the amount of $25.47. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Gary, Heart of Hagerstown.
Heart of Hagerstown. Couple things coming up for us. May 18th will be the townwide garage sale. That'll be just a one-day event. We're encouraging residents to get out and have a garage sale, yard sale, get rid of their stuff. July 20th, we will be doing a latex paint recycling event. That will be held at the hardware store. That's being sponsored by the hardware, Heart of Hagerstown, and the WUR Board. So that will be accepting all types of, all types of latex paint. No deck stains, nothing like that, no oil bases, no tars, but latex paint. Then that goes to a recycler over in Ohio, and they blend it and sell it back to Habitat and Restores for projects like that. We do have a committee working on Hometown Christmas, trying to come up with some new ideas, trying to revitalize it if there's interest from the community. So they've had two or three meetings. Hopefully get some things finalized on that this month or the latest next month, so we can kind of have a plan for what we're doing there. That is pretty much it for Heart of Hagerstown. Do you want an eclipse recap now, or do you want it later?
I think we're good.
Okay. So the eclipse, we got through the major event. Did we see the people we wanted to see? No. But I think what we set out to do a year ago was to show hospitality in full totality. We did. We completed all of our events. We had good turnout, and that was all in part to everybody working together and the partnerships from everybody. Town, utility crews, school, businesses, anything else to do. We all had to work together to pull it off. So I think as far as an overall event, it was great. We had about 18 states that came through the Welcome Center. So you know, the traffic was there, we just didn't have the volume. But I think it was a good weekend for everybody. I don't know of anybody that had issues or problems, and I think it was a great overall event, and we showed our hospitality.
Any questions? Well, this time, Eric, if you would like to step up here, the town would like to honor you and your organization in support of the solar eclipse. So you will see a specific appreciation for organizing Hagerstown's 2024 Solar Eclipse Festives. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay, moving to now the ordinance number 1-2024, the initial appropriation for the aviation fund.
Move the approved ordinance 1-2024, Israel. Second.
It's been properly moved in the second, approve ordinance 1-2024, the additional appropriation for the aviation fund, the amount of $6,450. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next, we have ordinance number 2, 2024, the wage and salary ordinance, effective date April 6, 2024.
Change the dates, don't have any more. So we're gonna talk later, I think, about billing, we're doing that weekly, and then let's see, the park board, or the park, he raised that, he raised for seasonal help.
The commission position now considered full-time?
Yes, that's, yes.
Is it full?
Thirty-two hours a week is what we put it at.
With benefits.
That's the, that's what Julie and I came up with, and that's the, you know, we sent out, and that's what he was presented. We didn't have any response back, so that's what Julie and I presented it.
Right. And he's...
Yeah.
Okay.
Very pleased with it.
What is that, number 24?
That was the 27th. It started last week.
Where's that old car?
April 7th.
The little white one?
Yeah, the little white Ford.
Still have it.
It's here somewhere. It should be in the parking lot right now. Yeah.
Is that supposed to be utilized for that, or not, or is it...
Terry is, Terry's really tall. He, he can barely get in the thing. So what he's been doing is using his own personal truck and putting Hagerstown signs on it, which I think if we get, ideally get a new truck for our utility crew within the next year, we'll probably get him one of the older ones to drive. I think is what we'll probably do.
We're still hanging on to that Ford?
Yeah, we still have that little, it's a little Ford Escape, I think is what it is.
Are we, what are we doing with it?
We're using it, because she, Julie...
Yeah, she doesn't have to go to the bank.
She has to go to the bank, which is down in Cambridge City, so she uses it, and it is still being used.
I make a motion that we accept the wage and salary ordinance 02-2024 as presented by Court Treasurer.
Second.
It's been properly moved in the second, approve ordinance number 2-2024, the wage and salary ordinance as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next up, resolution number 6, 2024, adopting the Wayne County Multi-Hazard Aviation Plan.
Yes, I sent that email out to everybody, and it's like five minutes. This is the, I don't know. Resolution 6-2024.
Is it written, the information?
Oh, I'm sure, yes, it was.
Rick, what do you guys think about that? Plan, you guys on board with it? It'll be easy to follow?
You were...
What is it?
The emergency plan.
All from...
The county.
The county? Yeah, it's basically the same one, I think, over the years, so I don't think much has changed.
No changes.
Make a motion that we accept or adopt the resolution number 6, 2024, the Wayne County Multi-Hazard Metigation Plan.
Second.
So we're properly moved in the second to approve resolution number 6, 2024, adopting the Wayne County Multi-Hazard Metigation Plan. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next up, we have the introduction, receiving of ordinance number 3, 2024, ordinance for amend rates and changes for waterworks in the town of Hagerstown. And so if we recall, this was, decided that in place of the electric rate hike that was going to come in the next month, that we were suspending that, putting this in place where it'd be better positioned for needs within the waterworks department.
So the only thing you need to do tonight is you might just kind of mention generally the percentage increase and what would be effective, and then we'll come back while the public hearing, the June meeting, much similar to what we did with the aviation fund tonight, but then you'd be able to take action, implement the hike in June, which would be better for July 1st, person of the ordinance.
So the reason for the increase in the waterworks is basically because we have applied for the grant, or doing a lot of replacing of old lines throughout the town. If we received that grant, it would start happening in about two and a half years.
Approximately, probably about two years from now.
About two years from now, which means when it's completed, we have to start making payments upon that grant. So this gets us a little bit of a head of that process, getting some of the monies into the funds, so that when the payments come due, we'll be ready for that. So we suspended the electric, as it was mentioned, and I believe we did a 10%, 10% increase on each segment of the water, what it currently is, which is substantially less than what the electric increase would have been. But this will just give us a little bit of a head start on being able to make the payments if we get this grant, and when it's completed, you'd have to start taking on that responsibility.
And if we don't get the grant...
We're gonna re, we can reapply in six months?
I'm trying to remember exactly what we're on, one where you can apply twice within 2024, so we would be applying like in November or something like that.
Yeah, towards the end.
Yeah.
So if we don't get the grant, is the increase staying in place?
I think it would, yeah.
We had a small increase to the water that would have come in place next year anyhow, so if, if we don't get the grant at all, we'll probably just let this replace that and suspend what that would have been anyhow, so.
This is part of that, where they told us our rates were not high enough to be for the grant? Is that right, if I'm remembering? That our, that our water rates and sewer rates were low, and for us to apply, we had to be at a certain level?
Plus, our current, don't hold me to the numbers, but the project is approximately two and a half million. Of that, we get $700,000 from the grant, so you have the remainder. It's at a pretty, we're unsure what the interest rate will be at this time, but our current water rates, it would be very difficult to make, continue to do our water work plus make those payments, so we have to get a little bit ahead of this if we're gonna do that. And Chris, I don't know all the streets, but it's several streets in addition to the loop. You might share with what those are?
It's over there on that drawing. I am, a lot of it is Perry and Walnut, wasn't a lot of it, there are other spots in town that were towards the cemetery as well.
I'm moving a booster station.
Basically, everything in red.
Yeah, primarily Perry and Walnut would be, Perry and Walnut would be the two main locations, and then some other remote locations around town.
And then...
Pearl, yeah.
And then finish the loop up on Jones Road.
Correct.
So we have to adopt tonight, John?
No, I think you can chat the minutes reflect, and then the ordinance was introduced, and then we'll take care of the meeting. So it's a first reading or an introduction, so you can have the minutes reflect that.
Introduction, so someone needs that.
So... So we need to...
I guess you can move, move to introduce it on first reading.
So I'm gonna move that we introduce ordinance 3-2024 and ordinance amend rates and changes for waterworks of the town of Hagerstown.
Second.
So we're properly moved in the second, we introduce ordinance number 3, 2024, ordinance for amend rates and charges for waterworks in the town of Hagerstown. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? One County D.C., what do you have for us?
We didn't have our regular meeting today. We have the annual meeting. Chris and Julie attended that, so I have an annual report, I can share with everybody if they want it. I will also, Julie, or Valerie will probably recap that, not forward you the, the minutes on that, but it was a well-attended annual meeting, and they went over all the things that was, that happened in 2023, and that's ongoing for 2024, so. Also, we're gonna be meeting, or Brian and Chris will be going down to Rushville with Valerie to meet with the mayor down there to look at their housing projects, and myself possibly, so something we can look forward to, and do that next Monday. So we'll talk about that next month.
Thank you, sir. Any comments, questions? One County Chamber?
I was out of town on their meeting day, so I wasn't able to attend.
Parks and Recreation?
No meeting.
Keith, Police Department?
Just a couple of things. I had a meeting last, actually, I think it was a week before last with the railroad. I was telling you, they came down. I spent about an hour with them going to the side on the crossing there by auto car, and then again on South Street. They took a lot of photos of the problem areas, et cetera, and then about five or six days later, got an email back, response from them. They said that they are scheduled, they're putting new rail lines through it there, which the new lines are actually already in place there. That's scheduled to begin July 1st, so that'll be a pretty quick process with the lines coming through. Once the lines are replaced beginning of July, then they'll come right back through, and then that's when they intend on redoing the crossing areas there. So they said that by the end of July, that should be completed, but they wouldn't do any repairs on it until they remove the rail line and replace it, because they said that it would be destructive to the repairs that they would make. So hopefully by the end of July, they'll have both of those crossings repaired. They also gave me information and a link that I can put out, because we've had a few people that have had damage to tires, et cetera, going over there. So I now have information that we can give them, where they can file a claim with the railroad for reimbursement or repairs, any damage caused by that, that we didn't have before. So hopefully they follow through, and by the end of July, we'll see some improvement down there.
Keith, I'd like to change that approach, to keep the trucks from high centering or trailers, and these stuff.
He didn't. The way it was explained to me was, is how that was designed had to be that way to work with the way the tracks run through there. He said they, they believe they can only do so much with, with angle as far as on the road part and the part that they claim they own. But he thought that it would be an improvement. As far as just going over it, they still claim that how it's designed, any trailer can still get over that regardless of what anybody else claims, that they're all designed that the semi and trailer can cross them. But there is warning signs down there with the low, the low boys is the ones that they're concerned about. But he, he said that he didn't anticipate any change in the grading or anything, just the quality of the roadway where it crosses that.
Of course, trailers have got...
And, you know, we had a crash down there where the semi claimed that he was stuck on the track, so they, they did bring video in from the train, and you can clearly see on the video that the semi wasn't stuck. It was just driver error. He wasn't in the semi at the time when it was coming. By the time he got back to it, he didn't have enough time to get off the track. So his claim that he was stuck wasn't accurate, and we could clearly see that in the video. So, you know, the way I was explained, crossing that with the semis, that they said the speed of the semis is key when they're crossing that. If they cross at the proper speed, they shouldn't have an issue, that if they, if they go too fast, same with vehicles. But they did agree that the condition, some, that's there right now, where they could see where that's causing issues with the vehicles, and that's why they provided the claim information, because they, you know, they did state that areas that was in bad shape right there was their responsibility. They just weren't gonna spend any time or effort into it, knowing that in another month or so, they're gonna be tearing it all up. But they said that also would be a very quick process when they come through, that they should be through that area within a couple of days max. So hopefully we'll, we'll get a quick response. I do have good point of contact now, where he says, moving forward, if we have issues or when they come through and do that, if they don't follow up like they're supposed to, I got someone I can reach out to, to hopefully try to continue to follow up until we get that taken care of.
Great work on that, man. I called, I called him several times and never got anything back from him, so congratulations.
A lot of that is just about running across the right person at the right time, and that's kind of what that was. Only other couple of things we had, we had no issues prom night again, which is always a great thing. During the COVID stuff, the high school, they did the senior prom parade. I guess now they've decided that's kind of gonna be an annual thing. So that's gonna be on Sunday, May 19th at 5:00 P.M. It's not, that's not a thing to where like we shut anything down. It's just more of, we escort the seniors that want to participate in their vehicles. They're gonna drive the same route as all of our parade, but there'll be no road closings. You know, they'll have police and fire escort for that, but that's a pretty quick thing. I think last year, there was like 19 or 20 vehicles in that, but we'll do that again on Sunday, the 19th. I gave you the breakdown of what we spent for the overtime for the eclipse weekend. I tried to cut officers and send them home when I could, just because we didn't have the amount of people that, you know, required a lot of the manpower. The only issue I ran into is a couple of those events just required a lot of officers, regardless if we had one person there or a thousand, just because, you know, we had man streets, blocked roads, et cetera. So several of those events over a couple of days, we just had no, no choice but to have the amount of people there that we did, just to safely shut everything down. As always, I, you know, I want to commend the town utilities and street department. They just do a wonderful job, and we couldn't, I mean, I don't think the town could do a lot of the events they do without, you know, the work that Joe and all of them do down there. They were there all weekend, all day long, any issue we had, anybody else had, they were right there to, to take care of that. We did have, DeKeisha was here from Hagerstown, Maryland. She spoke at the high school. As go to that, went very well as well. I think it was received very well by the student body and by the school staff. I was there for it also. She, she's a very entertaining speaker, and I thought her message was great, and that went well. Think other than that, that's really all that I had.
How do you expect the overtime to affect your budget?
You know, I was talking to Julie earlier today. I really won't know until closer to the end of the year. Like I was maybe suggesting to her is revisit it at the end of the year, and if I'm still within my budget and I'm gonna be able to get through the year okay, then, then we're fine. If I run into an issue, then we, that'll kind of be my justification of why I ran short, but we'll, we'll try to see where we're at, and, you know, at this point, without needing anything additional, and then if I run into that towards the end of the year, then I'll revisit it and we'll discuss it then.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Rick, Harder Department?
Month of April, hard runs were down, which was a good thing. They were down by about half of what they normally are, so I'm hoping it's gonna stay that way, but I'm not gonna guarantee it. But, so, but the guys are doing a good job. I got a good crew up there, and they did a good job. The FG grant we applied for, for new radios, I haven't heard anything on that. I don't really think they've started announcing the awards yet. And it takes them all summer long, they only announce so many departments a week, so, so hopefully, we're still in the running for it, but you don't know. We're still down two members, so we'd like to get that, some new members before the end of the year, or as soon as we can really, so we can get them trained and get them on the trucks. Still having problems with our grass truck, again, with that diesel exhaust filter on there plugging up on it. So we're looking right now at the possibility, exploring the option. There's nothing to guarantee about maybe, you know, trading that chassis off for a gas model, and just doing away with that diesel, so it's, because this doesn't have a regenerator on it where, like our engines do, where they, they set so long, they automatically kick into regen mode. This truck doesn't have that, so. And when that diesel exhaust plugs up, it kicks down into lag mode and just doesn't wanna go anywhere, so. So we're working on that. Budget time, we're starting to work on our budget. I see no really big issues with that this year. Do you want to go over? Getting a lot of complaints from people are calling me about open burning in town. I want to remind everybody that there's no open burning in town of Hagerstown, no ordinance, no yard waste, no nothing like that. So, they don't know, people can just look on the website and what the ordinance is, so. So they don't know. People can just look on the website and what the ordinance is, so. And with like Keith and Gary, we didn't have an issue with the eclipse. I think it was well attended. I mean, by the people, it was a good time. I think the vendors did well. And it goes to show, I mean, we have a lot of volunteers step up, but goes shows going to every event that clubs put on in town, it's going to take more than two or three people to put on. It's candid, so it's going to take more people in this town to step up and help these organizations with what they do. The organizations are vital to this community, so. So there's people out there that club or groups and different things that can they can help. They need to step up and do that, so. That's all I got for you.
Mike, there for order. Thank you for the appropriation fund. We greatly appreciate that. We purchased a 15-foot mowing deck to go up the track that we burned. We bought that should cut down our labor costs by like next year. It's more than twice the size of what we had before. We are looking to hire somebody next year. We're mowing it ourselves this year. So we can use that those funds to offset the difference in the cost of the money that we purchased. We're keeping up with that pretty well. It looks real nice out there. Everything's working well. And there is a fly-in this Saturday, pancake breakfast. If anyone is interested, it starts by 8:00. It's all down?
On Saturday?
It's on Saturday.
How's the water?
I need to get it tested. I had I took in a test and they kind of lost it.
Didn't remind me, what'd you guys do to solve that?
We got a UV that kills the bacteria in the water, so yeah.
What time did you say that fly-in was Saturday? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I believe it starts at 8:00 AM.
8:00 AM, thank you.
Also, you just reminded me. We finally have a signed lease with 4H, so we're happy about that. We got that signed. Be giving a last name.
We had to fight it for a year for that.
Conns questions?
I guess I got a question. So with the lease, now will we get like the $1 a year invoice or bill? Or how does that work? Like I paid it this year, but it was a little bit of confusion.
That's a good question.
So the 4H has to pay the?
$1 a year.
It's $1 a year.
Could've just paid it 10 years.
I would love to pay for 10 years, but I love it, but or more even, but but yeah.
Is that invoiced by the airport or?
Well, it could be. Now, most legal documents like that, they put in $1 just to show that there's legal terms consideration back and forth. So a lot of times it's not necessarily something that is required to be paid, but if you want to keep that track, you can.
I just don't want to be found after all of this. Yeah, you missed the other part.
Yeah, yeah.
So there's a last attorney, but anyway, but anyhow, I just don't want to be found, Paul, and what do you do? How do you do it and so forth?
I mean, you could just make a note. I'll go back and look at it, see exactly when it would be due, but you just want to make a note. You can just probably pay a dollar. You could probably pay five or $10 at a time. It'd be fine, so just get a receipt and that way you prove that you paid it.
Any advice or information?
President Chris Stanova canceled the meeting. No meeting.
Chris. Town manager report wastewater treatment plant. Olers is installing a fence at the Dana Love Station. Still waiting on some clarifier parts because we need to repair the north clarifier down there. We did receive a $15,000 little grant from the Indiana Finance Authority and it's to go towards the testing for lead service lines, which is a new federal government requirement we've got to work through.
Who does that testing?
The way we're doing it right, the way I applied for the grant was that it would be for individual tests that the homeowners can conduct or we will conduct at the different residences that are older than 1986. And then it would be, they'll have to be assending in the test. So I think I, you know, I think we need to have some discussion on that because I think if a homeowner doesn't want it, then I don't know that we should. You know what I mean? I it's, yeah.
So this is a new federal guideline that goes into the fact, is it 2025? Is that right or it's?
It's supposed to be completed by 2025.
Complete by 2025.
And what's what's our responsibility if there's lead there?
The only thing we are ever responsible for is lead in a service line leading up to the house. We're not responsible for anything inside the house, as I understand it.
Do we have those lead lines?
Not what we know of. That would be why we do the testing. So I mean, it's a tricky, it's a sticky situation because I'm sure there are probably houses with flood pipes on the inside, you know.
So what, that's what I was going to ask. What is the testing procedure? It's a bottle of water or something?
The testing procedure would be testing above, and I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but there's like a .1 part per million that is acceptable for children, you know, if you have anything under that. And it's the acceptable level of lead in a household. So what I was proposing would be that the test would test for that amount and if there if it's over that in any homes, then we would do further further observation of the service lines.
So then we would then have a service, know where, dig something up, look at them?
We would have to dig them up, yeah. And it's not, I mean, I don't know of any other, if you guys know of any other way of doing it, please tell me. You know, or if you know any other way of doing it. Because it's, you know, it's it's a it's a delicate thing, you know.
So are we, so we, are the homeowners? What year are you saying we need to look at?
86. 86 and older is what I've been told.
So is it mandatory? We'll just take my home.
It's mandatory.
My home's older than that, so am I required to get you a sample?
As I understand it, it's it's mandatory that we have an inventory of what houses have and don't have lead service lines or have lead present in their water.
So if we're mandated that, then then the homeowner doesn't have an option. I mean, if there's a mandate that says we have to have that inventory.
Yeah.
And somebody says, no, you're not coming into my house to do this, then now what?
Actually, and John and I have exchanged a couple of emails about it too, because you know, it's it's one of those things I feel like the federal government has handed down and said, here's what we want you to do, but they haven't really provided a clear path of how to do it. I think what they would like would be for every town to hire additional employees on their water departments and actually physically look at every service line, you know, which would require digging up 923 service lines, you know, which we don't have the manpower to do that.
Well, it's spelled the opposite way. Somebody wants it done and now they've tested high in the lead. Now what, I mean, what plan is in place? What are we going to do? Is it now a homeowner's responsibility to look at their pipes? And then we have to look at our pipes?
We would have to look at our pipe leading up to there.
And if ours are clean, then it's on that.
Then do they have to replace all of their piping in their house? You know, that's a good question.
They then have to?
I don't know. I don't know. Like I said, this is one of those things that have been handed down by the federal government where they haven't spelled out a good, clear way of doing it.
They gave us $15,000 to do it.
Gave us $15,000 to do it and told us we need to do it by 2025. That's basically it.
I can't, did you by chance send out an email that had literature on that?
There should be, yeah.
Yeah, I remember that. That's where I got some of these.
So if a homeowner wanted to bring a water sample up so you don't have to go into the home, can that be done? Where does where do they take it to?
We'll have to work through that, yeah. We'll have to work through that. All the tests I've seen would need to be, it's not off to a place like AGML, which is where we do all of the water testing at Muncie.
And will the test results be kept? I guess for example, if it's different requirements, if we have kids or not, like Brian's case, he doesn't have kids, but if he's still.
See, it was still according to the government. We need to have a database of what properties have above the allowable percentage of lead in the water.
But I guess I'm just thinking through it. I mean, I I don't, they haven't they haven't specified. Does everybody or do you have to have a database of so many homes and?
We're supposed to have a database of all the homes.
By 2025. With no resolution plan in place or just the database?
The database, yeah.
Could we have a, I'm just thinking this thing through. I mean, this might not be you might not be able to handle this, but I I mean, I wouldn't fight it. I understand it, but like Gary's having this paint day where you know it's a paint day. Could we have a day in the town where you have it set up where people can bring in, you tell people how much water they gotta have? I'm assuming it's got to be cold water, not hot water.
Yeah, I I mean, I they'd have to have the kit there and the test and everything right there with the water.
You couldn't bring the water, we couldn't bring the water to you and then?
And water testing procedures are really strict. I mean, like every test we run, the water has to run for five minutes and it has to be, you know, we have to have a specific location. In other words, it's taken the bathroom sink or at least take, I mean, it's extremely specific.
So they're going to have to come into the homes?
Most likely.
Because the other concern there is something different, a bottle of tap water or bottled water.
Bottle of water, yeah, exactly. Yeah, it's exactly, that's exactly right, yeah.
Have to verify the source.
Well, I guess we need to get a handle on how we're going to handle this.
You know, in my opinion, I think they've set their goal as a here's what we would like to see, but realistically, like I told them, we have one and a half people full time on our water department. You know, they have other stuff that they need to do every day, you know, without us hiring.
The COVID enforcement officer.
That's right, that's right. So it might be, yeah, that might be it.
The one thing I didn't catch in that literature, there's no repercussions.
For us, it doesn't look like there is. Or I mean, is that what you're asking?
That's all I'm saying. I'm not even asking.
So there's no danger?
Yet.
Yet is the key word.
But you know, like if I, and here's here's the thing, if I was going to buy a house in Hagerstown or if I had four kids and was going to buy buy your house.
Yep.
I'm going to want to know what the lead service line information is on that. You know what I mean? So it it's a slippery slope and I don't, there's a lot of details I don't think we're really worked through on it very well.
And that's what I'm getting at, since since there's really no direction at this at this point, and this is the wish list of the federal government.
Correct.
So until they come up with guidelines or the direction of wanting to go, we'll do our best and I mean, it's not like.
That's how I look at it. Yeah, that's all you can do is your best.
It's not like we're going to get slapped with something if we don't have this all done by January.
That's why I proposed, let's see what houses have even, and that's why I said the allowable limit for children. What houses are above that limit or below that limit? I have no guess, but I'm guessing the majority of houses will be below that limit. And therefore, in my opinion, the majority of the houses would not even be needing to look at their service lines. You know what I mean? So that's that's my opinion on that, so we'll see.
Yep, but I think once we run these tests, we got to look at the other end of that too. When you run the test and it comes back at a high level.
It's not necessarily our problem, but it's a variable.
But you're going to have to narrow it down whether it is.
Correct. It's an area where we can at least then look at the service line or at least the connections with the service line and see if there were like connections.
And even if it's not our problem, if it's a landlord's problem, then what percentage of them can like where they?
See, that's exactly, to repot their house, yeah, yeah.
But this is a town, once if it's our problem, it's going to have to be fixed.
If it's our problem, I mean, all my work lines are part of our service line, it needs to be fixed, yeah.
Richmond summed that a few years ago because they come into our office. They leased it down Main Street. They had to cut up a little bit of the sidewalk to see what was coming into the building, which it wasn't lead, but then we got a paper that said it was our responsibility. They never did test, but if we wanted to test, it was our responsibility to test, but I told them I wasn't too concerned about it because when we bought the building, we replumbed it all, replumbing from from their main inn and they said it wasn't lead coming in, so we have no lead inside, so. I don't know.
I think I think the majority of the houses in Hagerstown would be virtually impossible to replumb without a major major remodel there, I think, yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
I'll say just keep this in the loop then.
Let's keep like keep like moving forward, that's what I've got to do. So, okay, let me go on down through my report. We kind of got hung up right there. Obviously, we're working on the OKR grant, electric department tree training, assisting with other departments. We had a electric assistant turned in this two weeks. I've advertised that position and we've already had some interest in that. Streets department, we have our employees all back with that. Working on replacing the curbs. We've got, we've lost a lot of curbs around Hagerstown, concrete curbs. And so I'm also going to be applying for another community crossings grant in June and I'm also planning on addressing more curbs with that grant as well. The community crossings just took place on Paul Murphy, West North Market Street and South Elm Street. We've got those all taken care of. Other stuff, I've been filling in for the building inspector while he was gone. Terry is back now and we're thankful that he's back. Describe some other things there. We do have the new information and sign in place. We have training on that tomorrow. We've had to deal with a lot of IP addresses and IT stuff, trying to get it all up and running, but we're getting very close on that. Also dealing with some absentee landlords that aren't maintaining their properties right. That was something I kind of dealt with while Terry was gone and he's going to pick up on that now that he's back. A lot of houses where we have windows out and animals getting in and yards that aren't being maintained, things like that, so.
On his report, there's a, he's, looks like he's asking a question. Do you want to serve a notice of violation on an address in Washington Street?
On Harry's?
No, I think it's Terry's.
Yes.
Do we need to, I mean, he's got a question mark. He's asking somebody, do we want to serve it? I'm assuming it's the council or is it you?
What's the address on that?
391 South Washington.
It says unsafe egress, not maintained. Well, it's Terry's. Report's kind of different font, different size, but it was.
Yeah, Terry did have a report there.
Yeah, well, there's
Yeah.
Two pages.
I think I think I know what property he's talking about. I'm 100% sure.
And it says, some of these things are egress on this road, I guess. It's not maintained, unsafe. And then like some of this, it says needs enforced. Is he, is he going to do the enforcement on that? I mean, what what?
He would be if it's anything related, yeah.
Well, I assume that.
I think he's, I think those are items he's working on probably, yeah.
And a little bit of heads up, he was needing the plan commission to look at a couple of ordinances that we had. And that we had that on the agenda, then we received his terminations and that kind of got put aside because we didn't have anybody, but I'm sure he'll come back to the next one and then that's when we get back on to the agenda that we need to refine some of our ordinances to try to help him do some of the notices to help him out on that area. Some of them are wild or some of them are pretty vague. And some of them don't have any authority attached to them.
Clarification on that. Is he still under that board's control or is it going under Chris's?
No, he's not under Chris. He's underneath the plan commission. Now, on the daily stuff, if he has some questions, you know, just some general questions, he goes to Chris. He comes to the town council, he comes to the plan commissions and addresses that and tells us what some of his concerns are and what we need to do and then we try, we're going to try.
Does it define which codes he's going to enforce? I mean.
Why is it under the plan donation or?
No, I'm asking, has somebody defined for him which codes he's going to enforce? Some codes are under.
As of right now, it's just zoning and zoning and.
Rick's jurisdiction.
Zoning and building, yeah. I I think he understands which codes he is currently enforcing. So he's not like a code enforcement officer. He's still just building and zoning right now. So tall grass is still G L A, junk in yards is still K.
We never added that to him because when we bought that up, he had already decided he was leaving, so we never added that. That we talked about, that that's something we could add.
Yeah, I thought that was part of the reason why bringing him on us full time is added to take some of that off of Keith, some of that off. some of that off of Julie, I don't know why the town works out doing the grass.
Yeah.
For me, that doesn't make any sense.
That's all it is.
But, and, and there's another reason, a police officer needs to be out, write somebody a violation for junk in the yard.
And I have discussed with him, I, um, when we get to that point, I'm going to add him, I can add him to our e-ticket system, which will allow him to write ordinance violations for that stuff through the e-ticket system, which will allow him to be able to do that.
That's part of our discussion of bringing him on us full time, is to assume some of those roles.
Yep.
He is thirty-two hours a week, is what he is, four days, four days.
The other thing we talked about, we gotta do it is, so if he is enforcing rules that's under Keith, do we need to move that underneath the plan commission or does he answer to Keith on those rules and then on building and those, he come back to us? I can see where we could bring the grass up.
We gotta get the grass off, out of, off her table.
We could do that.
The junk stuff, he doesn't need to be enforcing, law enforcement doesn't need to be doing that. Now, if it's a junk car, that you need to see if it's stolen, I mean, that's different.
But wouldn't we have to do that back, get that out from underneath Keith and get it over?
Well, how to get under Keith?
It's an ordinance, it's an emergency ordinance.
You just create an ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think...
I guess, I don't know.
Yeah.
Because those aren't law enforcement specific ordinances, though.
They're not, but if you look, if you look in the ordinances, how it's written, I believe it's in there that I am the enforcing agent for those. It's in the verbiage of the, the actual ordinance for that, but yeah.
The, the, the grass, we actually send a letter out and so, it says, fine.
We'll look into those and see how we can get some of them over there.
Along those same lines, Chris, with, with his position, in a way. Do we know anything about the blighted housing grant, where that's, where that's at with the county? If we're gonna receive any of that?
No, the blighted housing grant, now if you receive an email about how that's going to go, we will receive X amount of money to tear down a house and then we will, till they tear down the house and we'll, we'll put a lien on that property and then if the lien is paid, which might be one year, it might be thirty years, you know, it might be whenever they sell it, might not be ever, then that money has to be used to tear down another house at that point, that's how.
So, do we wanna accept that money?
I mean, we've gotta apply for it first.
Because think of that reasoning there, okay? So Fred, you got a problem.
Yep.
Okay, we're gonna tear it, we're, we're gonna be so good, we're gonna tear it down for you.
Yep.
But now we're gonna put a lien on you, so you're obligated to pay off that lien.
Right.
And if you never pay off that lien, you can't sell your property, you really can't do a lot of things because you got a lien on it.
Right.
So, when I tell you I'm gonna put a lien on it, are you really gonna let me tear it down? Because really, I'm not tearing it down, you're gonna pay it back, so truly, you're tearing it down.
Right, exactly.
And I don't know, I don't know that that's that great, I'll be honest with you, I don't see that.
No, I agree, I thought, I thought it was a grant, I didn't realize that we were...
They're calling it a grant, but that's how they're structuring and unless something changes, that's how it's been structured. So I don't, you know, there's some details like that that we need to work through.
So is that a change from the last time we did that?
It's, it's not the same thing, it's a totally different, this is through economic development in Wayne County, the other one was through the IH-CDA, so the other one's a federal grant and it actually...
Correct, people were wrong, that one, we had owned the property, the town, correct?
The town temporarily owned the property and went, yeah, I mean, that was, uh, we received each house about twenty-five thousand, approximately twenty-five thousand dollars.
The owners had an option, how they wanted to do it.
Correct, yeah.
They could retain ownership or give up ownership, but that, this one here, it's just, to me, I don't know why I'm gonna let you tear down a building and then put a lien on me and I gotta pay back the building.
No, I, I agree.
So there's just some details like that that we need to work through and maybe, yeah, we'll just see, you know, see how that...
But that money hasn't been distributed yet or been asked.
We've not, we've not applied for it yet, huh?
I think that the unfortunate thing is we've got several houses in this town that are in such disre, disrepair that nothing's being done with it by the homeowner, landlord, whatever you wanna call them. And it's just eyesore for our community, hazards for our community and at the end of the day, I, I mean, that's where I'm hoping Terry comes in here and we can really start putting some pressure on these people to get their, get their buildings up to code.
Yeah, you know what's sad is a lot of those properties have mortgages on them too, you know, that's really sad. So that's, cause that's kind of a double whammy because you have, you might owe fifteen or twenty thousand dollars on a house plus it's gonna cost fifteen or twenty thousand dollars to knock it down and you have a forty thousand dollar lot, you know, so.
I guess you need to think through if you've got a property that's really blighted, you should be able, through your ordinances, to essentially force it to be torn down and this program's giving you the money to do that. You do have a lien then on it and then I'd wanna know what type of lien and what mechanism you have because potentially you could foreclose on that lien and not, you wanna be in the property owning business, but then if you do actually take ownership, then you could get it back into productive use, give, you know, to a neighbor or whatever. I mean, those are just things to think about.
So, going along with that and maybe we just don't know the shit, can we put a timeline on there? Where like you said, it might be one year, it might be thirty years before they sell it. Can we put a timeline that says, you know, we're putting a lien on this, it has to be paid by, I don't know, that might be something we can't...
Typically, a lien's only on the property sold right, that it has to be.
Well, it depends on what type of lien it is, you know, like a mortgage is technically a lien or a type of lien and you have a mechanism to foreclose on that if, if they don't keep up that end of the deal. And so I'd wanna see, maybe I need some more detail on this program and what type of lien you're gonna be entitled to as the town, if you incur this expense and just sit, you know, if it is just sit there till they sell it, then yeah, I'm with Brian, I don't know that that's a good deal, but if you have a mechanism that three years, five years, ten years even, you can do something, then, I mean, maybe that makes sense, you take the money, you tear it down, clean it up, it's at least cleaned up and then you give them some time to get back on their feet or do whatever they're gonna do with it.
If it's got a mortgage and we foreclose or we, the mortgage owner's gonna have to be willing to let us do that, right?
There, yeah, they're gonna, well, they're gonna have priorities, so they're just gonna, they can ride along and you really can't, you can't scrape off that mortgage, right, so.
But the mortgage holder won't be able to sell it if the town had a lien on it unless that lien is satisfied.
So, if the town...
If the town put a lien on it, there's a mortgage on it too.
Right.
Mortgage holder, whoever that may be, if they go to sell it to somebody new, that lien is still gonna have to be satisfied.
So if the mortgage holder takes a few foreclosure and they're in first place and it sells and it doesn't, if it doesn't pay, doesn't generate enough money to pay off the mortgage, then you're a secondary lien, so you're just kinda scraped off and you're out. But if it does generate enough and the mortgage gets paid and then you get potentially paid back that way. So, all kinds of different scenarios.
Can you get him more information on that program?
Yeah.
Yeah, if it's got any details, especially...
See, I'll get, yeah, I'll send you the emails, yeah.
The black sign coming into town from one hundred, one thirty-eight, where our new digital sign is and swallow black, like township, deliver townhead signs, is at the right angle if you're sitting at the stop sign facing west.
Box, I, I've noticed, yeah, yeah, I've noticed, yeah, I've noticed, I'll try and look at that, yep.
The curb project you mentioned?
Yes.
Has all the curbs been repaired that you've previously identified before we move on to new curbs?
They will be here in a couple of weeks, I know, yeah, 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 yep.
All right.
Something's a matter of...
Yeah, I gotta get those, yeah, I gotta, and I wanted also, I guess I didn't see it on the agenda, but I had sent Rob an email about Jubilee Days earlier today and she sent me a good email back. I don't, did you wanna discuss that too while we're here? I think we probably need to.
I, I agree, so...
Kinda took you off the spot, Rob, let me discuss it, okay?
Well, I got that email, it was a well-written email as well, so.
I don't know what you want me to say.
Well, for the, for the, the people that maybe don't know, that's probably watching this, can you just give them a quick overview of the state of Jubilee Days and Lions Club?
Okay, the state of Jubilee Days, um, and as far as Lions Club, what we've done in the past, we're no longer doing. So, we are not going to be the sponsor of Jubilee Days at this point. Not at this point, we're not going to be the sponsor of Jubilee Days. Um, I have approached multiple service organizations, I did this last year before twenty-twenty-three Jubilee and asked for their clubs to join in, help with Jubilee or take Jubilee over and there was no interest. Now, after Jubilee, I did have a community call out where we had three to four people, I believe, showed up, showed interest and here we are, you know, it's May when we need to be and we have nothing. So, I, we just can't do it.
So I had a resident come to me about this, he and I were speaking on, what was going on. He had brought up that in some communities, not that the town wants to do any more than it's already doing, but some communities, the town puts on that particular parade or festivities or festival. Is that something that we would want to take on as a town?
Can I comment, can I, um, I'm gonna object again because a lot of this was on Chris's email that I sent him. After I left the town as clerk treasurer, I went around and trained new clerk treasurers in their jobs. And at that time, I found many, and I went over the whole state of Indiana from north to south and I found many of the festivals, community festivals, like Jubilee Days is put on by their town. Now, I know Hagerstown and I just know, you know, the capabilities of the employment here, you know, as far as they're tapped, again. And, and that does not necessarily mean that the town foots the bill for a festival, okay? They aren't, they, they're just the organizer, so to speak. And the festival has to create its own income in, in those communities and that's what they use. They use that at that point, just like Lions Club has done. And you do your sponsors, you get, you know, and, and quite frankly, the town is the overall insurance carrier because quite frankly, that's what we've had to do with Lions, we've covered the whole, you know, thing for insurance. They become the, they become the forefront, they can assign a committee, they can, but those committees literally have to be on board three hundred and sixty-five days a year, not just two months or not just six months. And that committee has to be very involved throughout the year making things happen. So, these communities do it, um, but I don't know that that's something that we're starting to take on.
Yeah, I know, I know some communities do, but you know, with us, we've got seven utility employees and that's for five different departments, streets, water, electric, sewage and the cemetery. And during the summer months, you know, that's when people wanna take vacations and if we have someone sick and a lot of times during the summer months, in July, August, we are just barely able to hold together, you know what I mean? And we do have a good collaboration as far as the streets, you probably have seen, are getting teared up or torn up or we have water leaks to get repaired and we do have a good collaboration where they're able to come together for a couple hours and work on that type of thing, but man, we are spread awfully thin during the summer months, I mean, just awfully thin.
Robin, I seen in your email as well, and thank you for sending that, then, you know, even your club or you ask for community input is, is, uh, once the go-kart racing required you to go to three days and ten of them one day, you know, that brought in a lot of people, but you may have mentioned that you had worked diligently and somewhat struggled trying to reface or re-energize Jubilee Day and try to think of activities to do on day, that day that would initiate more people coming in and had been hard to do. Are, and we are late into this year. Are we better off to skip this year and if we're going to get a new committee to do this and to rethink it, rethink Jubilee, to give us time to really think about what it needs to look like and how it should be done?
Well, that's, that is a good point, Brian, and, and I will tell you that I came in, we came into Lions Club together and it was dying. Jubilee Day was absolutely, there was nothing, there might have been four little street vendors when we, when we started coming in and I just kept saying, I can't let this die, I can't let it die. And that's when, working in other communities, I mean, I was at Goodwin, that's exactly where I found the go-kart people, to bring them down here and was working up there and, um, and that's how we rebuilt it and we have not, like I said, since they left, been able to put a new face on, on the daily activities of Jubilee. Do you let it not do anything this year? I don't know how you do do something this year, other than maybe your parade, you know? Unless, unless the people that reach out, I turn to somebody else, you know, and say, because I have already had three people reach out and say, hey, um, we're thinking about coming over this year for the festival, for the, um, you know...
Fleet market?
Fleet, well, I'm not allowed to call it that, um, they made us quit calling it the flea market.
The food alley.
Yeah, just call it that, that's good. And so I have, and that's when I said, you know, we, I have to do something, I can't just ignore these people and not answer their questions for the good of the community. I mean, you know, I'm not, I don't want anything bad for the community, I want something to happen for the community. It'll grow back, somebody's gonna take it over, somebody's gonna do something, a group, a committee, it may be the whole community comes together and does it, rather than just an organization. Um, and that's why I thought if you had one guide, i.e. the town, and I'm not trying to throw it on Chris, I'm not at all, because I'm not, that's not the person that I even, I'm just saying maybe there's somebody that could work with the town to...
Who did it before Lions Club? You have a few, Robert?
It's always been Lions.
It's always been Lions Club and it's, it goes back to when I was this tall. I don't really know, and I'm, you know, when I moved here, that was...
Yeah, back then they had the JC, then JC's always sponsored the Subox Derby, that's part of...
Well, that was one, that was one facet of it and that was what I even tried to do last year was get, okay, well, you take over this and you guys take over this and you, I mean, and it just couldn't happen.
I know, it's a lot of work, I know, you put a lot...
It is, it is, but, and I mean, I'm, I'm past that now, I just want the good for the community, I want something to happen, um, but...
So, Robin, I mean, this is really not important, but it gives us an idea. I know in the last few years, you know, of course, the town always provided electricity down for the, the alleyway there for the vendors, um, so that they didn't have a cost to them there. And the last three or four years, we've supplied the tent, so, um, is, is it an activity if somebody wants to take it on or if it's the face of the town? I'm struggling with that a little bit, but if, if somebody takes that on, does it, does it maintain itself financially or is it going to be a drain to? So if, if the city did not provide electric, which we would, and if we didn't provide a tent, does it even, anymore does it even break even for a club or a organization? Or is it something that we're gonna go forward with saying, you know, well, you have to have a budget to even make this event happen or it's, or it'll go under?
Well, I can tell you at one time, um, it was a very profitable weekend for, for the Lions and, um, now I can tell you that we are paying everyone that helps us. So the cheerleaders take care of the kids zone, we pay them five hundred dollars. We, you know, this group, the FFA is taking care of this segment, we're paying that, and I'm just throwing numbers out there. You know, we pay them so many hundred dollars, so all these sponsorships that I have gone out and gotten are great.
But they'd all disappear.
But they're all disappearing, we're gonna give money to those groups anyway, so we finally just said, hey, yeah, we'll, we'll give you this money in our budget every year, but now you have to come back and help us do something, you know, rather than not do anything and we just give you the money. So it's kind of a work together as far as that goes, but they don't wanna take that on and rent, I mean, you know, it's several thousands dollars to rent that, those blow-up houses down there. I mean, you know, and then if you only have two hundred kids that come through at ten dollars a wristband, you're eating eighteen hundred dollars. So, I understand why they don't wanna... So I understand why they don't wanna take it over, because they're not in, in that situation to be able to do it on the know, I mean, on the unknown, you know? If it rains, you're out. That group, that organization is out if they are the ones that sponsored that. That's just an example. And then every band that comes in at the tent, every music thing, every musician or magician and act, and, and they're not cheap anymore. I mean, they're just not. So, again, I just wanted to bring it back to the forefront. If you guys have questions, I'll be glad to answer them. You don't even have to ask them to me tonight. But I'm just saying, I wanted to bring it forward again and.
Were you able to include in your email a list of the events that Lions Club, it's like the different events that they've covered during?
During a year, a year?
During Jubilee Days, like the various things that they were responsible for.
All of Jubilee Day. I don't know what, I guess I don't know what you're asking.
The car show, the kids' zone.
The car show, the kids' zone, the festival market, not flea market, festival market, the parade, anything that happened under the tent.
5K?
No, no, yeah, we, we don't do that anymore. We did, but our insurance wouldn't let us carry it anymore.
Yeah, the other thing you gotta look at is our insurance with that.
Yeah, that's, that's the craziest thing. Insurance no longer would let us cover the 5K. Isn't that crazy? But anyway, that's, that's business today, I guess. You know, yeah, I sent Chris an email and gave him some information, but Lions Club is not going away. Okay, I don't want anybody to think that. I don't want it to have, we will participate in, you know, the Spring Festival, the Fall Festival, hometown Christmas. Matter of fact, I have to get back ahold of the gal. She wants us to do something. I'm not sure what, but. Anyway, so yeah, where are you going?
Well, on behalf of Hagerstown people who enjoy Jubilee Days, like myself, the council, you guys did a wonderful job.
Thank you. Somebody will take it over.
I agree. Someone will take it over. Unfortunately, the, the era that we live in now, voluntarism is down everywhere. I mean, you've heard Rick even ask for, you know, volunteer firefighters, she's down too there. It's just all the civic organizations, they either shut down or they have five or six members.
And it's not all to blame, blamed that way. I mean, school's starting earlier. We've lost that, that run-up to, hey, Jubilee is the week before school starts, you know? And that's when the, you know, alumni would come back. And that's when they'd have their reunions the week before school started and so on and so on. So it's not, there's just a lot of things that go into what I believe, you know, and we, we build it up, build it up, and then, okay, now everybody at the school, they're having athletic events up there, there's baseball games down here. So it's like you have people from the parade till 1 o'clock in the afternoon, and then they're gone. So it's tough putting on a festival for that period of a time. It's a lot of work, a lot of money for less than an eight-hour festival, really.
Well, I'm, I'm hoping whoever's watching this, you know, hear this and realize that there needs to be someone else pick the ball up and run and run with it, so.
And Robin, if we, if, if somebody wants to rejuvenate it, it basically has to stay on that weekend because that's the rotation of the community.
So everybody says it does.
Well, but isn't that because it stays off of everybody else's weekend, like Centerville's or.
Canal Days.
Oh, I don't know why you could have moved it to June. I don't know. I mean, you know, there's, but every time I would mention that, I was told, oh, gosh, no, you can't do that. The, you know, the reunions are there. That's, you can't do that. Well, okay, so maybe we're gonna start changing when people come in for a reunion. It's, people, you know, people have to start thinking outside of their box there a little bit. And I just, every time I try to say, well, we can move it, no, you can't.
So that is an option. It can be moved. There's no set.
No, no, I mean, no. I say move it. I would move it if I was involved. I told Chris that. I would not be outing on that weekend. I would not.
But like I said, the school changes the dynamics a lot.
It sure did.
I, I don't know about the classroom unions. Mine's always in July and I go home in July. There's nothing.
Well, we have ours in July now because I was always involved with Jubilee Day.
Yeah, so I mean, I didn't know, I didn't know you had to have a classroom union in August.
Yeah, it's just, I think it's, it's just been that way for, you know, all those years. It was always the weekend before school started. Anyway, that's.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chris, the Tudor property, you have?
I've got two appraisals that are, if you're, you know, if someone were interested in purchasing, I guess.
So would be looking to purchase the property since it's in a floodplain, probably raise the, the buildings there and then possibly turning the land into the rest of.
Probably just combining with the rest of the park.
Just to bring everybody up to speed on the conversations that have been going on.
And that would, like the property we purchased last year, that would have to, we'd have to pay the average of two appraisals for it, or at least make that offer. They might not accept it. If they don't accept it, we can't do anything about it, so.
What are we gonna do with this if we get it?
Basically take the buildings down and turn the property into the rest of the park, basically. Cause it's in a floodplain. Nothing can really be put.
Does that mean a park couldn't put a building down there or?
I don't foresee.
Probably like a shelter house or something open, but I don't.
Yeah, it might be, they could do a shelter house and something open, but it floods so badly down there that I don't know if you wanna really put another structure there.
Does it flood up there next to the house? Though it just floods around the house, right?
Uh, there's been a few times.
It's still in the floodplain, believe it or not. Floodplain goes all the way to the road ring track.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I've, I've seen it go up to, not to the door, but going up to that little hill that goes up to the house.
Which house are you talking about?
Arlo, Arlo Krolz.
Has been in the house before. Okay. This was the basement.
Okay.
But I've seen that pad and the shelter house or the swing set or, I don't know, whatever. Wouldn't, it wouldn't bother that?
No, I wouldn't think so. I mean, I think more than anything, just, again, like I mentioned earlier in the meeting, we have these, all these blighted houses throughout town. I mean, that, that building's not as bad as some of the other ones in town, but it's definitely something that needs to be taken care of. And, I mean, if we're able to get the property, and in my opinion, I think it would be just another way to clean up a small part of the town.
It is one of the, it is one of the main roads that people can come into town, other than Main Street. So, you know, you might do something there as far as signings for the town as well or some place.
No digital site.
In the water.
High water sign.
Maybe we can build a, a new police department there, so. On both. But yeah, in all seriousness of things, you know, at least in my opinion, being able to clean that area up, granted, we can't really do anything with it, with it being in the floodplain. At least it cleans it up and we can do have a good parks department. And granted, you know, when it rains, you're not gonna be able to use it anyways, but.
Yeah, they have a festival in town for the weekends.
Right.
With all the regulations and permits you gotta get nowadays to actually burn fraternity.
And what we could do, I don't know, it, it wouldn't be help you guys, but if we were able to get the property, probably could use that building for a period of time for you guys to train it if need be.
It'd be an earn it, but you guys have to tear all the jingles and siding and stuff off. But to where it's just a frame of a house, I mean.
Right.
But yeah, when you hazard this, like furniture, carpet, stuff like that, that's all that's come out.
Is there other discussion on it? If not, I'll make a motion. Basic emotion that we made is that we.
I do have one.
Yes.
I, I don't know. So, in a floodplain, I, I know some, some parts of the floodplain, there's been what I call somewhat of a levee that's been put in. If you own that and it's in a floodplain, can you somewhat levy? Or can you not alter it, alter the property at all? Or is, is there any? Do we know what's, what we can do within a floodplain? Our floodplain's a floodplain. It's no time.
So you're saying if you were to build a, wanting to build a permanent structure on the floodplain, is that what you're wanting to do?
Well, or just, even if you park it with some of this stuff, can you somewhat control some of the water where you wanna control it?
Not very easily. I mean, you know, the main thing would be if, if you were to build a structure there, it would have to be above the floodplain, so it would have to be on stilts or, you know, I think Tara and I discussed it, it had to be nine or 10 foot higher than what the current house is right now.
And I've seen it, so if you want to put a levee, you have to put a levee around the whole building. Cause it comes in through the front too, where the drive is, so you ought to put a lot of levee down the front and down that west side over there a bit.
I mean, I think about just making it a green space, if anything, part of the borders party, you know, take it part of the park. And now we control that, that piece of property. We don't have to worry about it deteriorating.
Tires.
Yeah, there's a lot of tires down there. I know when I was a baseball coach, we went and picked up some of those tires and brought them down on the baseball fields so we could use them to tart. So I think I'd probably still use them to this day.
I mean, as long as we've got some sort of a direction or plan of what we wanna do with that, it's just to go buy that property and then clean it up and then, you know, turn it over to the park. Now that's additional resources for employees and/or equipment and/or maintenance and/or funding. Are we gonna commit to expanding the park?
It's okay.
Right, just, we just need to be on board. If we do this and this goes through, then we now have set ourselves up to commit to maintain it and improve it, or improve it and maintain it. And buying it is gonna be the cheapest part.
Right.
If, you know, this goes through. I mean, that's gonna be the cheapest thing is buying it. Whereas then, you know, now it's ours forever and it's gonna have to be maintained and it's gonna require resources and allocations of funds, which is okay. It was, we need to be cognitive to the fact that if we do this and move it forward, we're not gonna be willing to commit to that.
Have you had any discussions with Mike on this by chance?
Uh, you or?
He and I talked about it briefly, but at the time it was, well, we didn't even notice for sale. That's what he told me, so. But it sounds like we can make an offer on it.
Make an offer either that he can get it for that price, but you know, I mean, it wouldn't work for us, but yeah.
I mean, what I can do is reach out to Mike, get his thoughts on how we can maintain it.
And is that your thought is to move this into the park's umbrella?
Yes.
We probably should have that conversation with the parks board and.
Yeah, and like I said, Mike and I talked about it briefly. Yeah, at the end of the day, it's, like I said, I think it's something that.
I agree. We need to do something, wouldn't we?
I agree. And like, like I said, it's just, but you're right, you gotta maintain it, so. And that's where the, you know, park.
I mean, if it's one of the parks, then.
What I'll do is I'll shoot out an email to, to Mike and the president of the park board and we'll go from there, so.
So we don't have to do anything this.
No, we don't do, I mean, this, we, we don't, like Chris said, this would just be.
So the groundwork is done, so then if we're ready to move forward with it, then we've got.
That would be a proposal we can take to them.
Okay.
So, and I don't know if, if Mike has any other poll with anybody with, with that property or not, so.
Anything else for Chris? The building official support was there, I don't know if you knew that. Julie?
I reached out to all of them because I still haven't got an exit interview and they said it'll probably be sometime within the next couple of weeks. We have an exit interview, so I just need one of you, which will probably be Becky, cause she's retired, but. Just waiting on that, that's, thank you. And then I also had, I know Rick talked about the BCA.
Yes.
Do we need to appoint people?
Well, if you want a BZ board, you're gonna have to appoint, cause you've only got one guy that's legally on a BZ board right now.
And that president, panel, point?
That's mixed, is what I was looking through the comments, I believe.
It said Rick and Chris Novak need reappointed. And then he talked to Brad Robinson, he was interested, he would need to be appointed. And Wes is the one that's, okay.
How many needs to set on?
Is that four, Rick? Four? BCA's four people?
No, there's five.
There's five.
I think you're one shy.
I think the plan commission's supposed to have two, two on it, aren't we?
Right now, Chris Novak is in one of the plan commission. Wes Shoemaker Shepherd's one, I'm one. Brad is, I talked to Brad, he's volunteered to be in the Two Mile Friends since Chris Lang cannot longer do it, cause he's now township trustee. So now we'll need another one.
It has to be in town.
Has to be in town.
And it's not on the plan commission?
No.
Cause I thought at one time the plan commission had two on it.
Yeah, I have my book with me, so I can look it up and email everybody tomorrow, but I don't have the zoning book with me. But yeah, we need to appoint, we need to be reappointed. Wes is adjourned at the end of this year, so if he wants to stay, we'll have to be reappointed in December. I see at one time, when I was on council, everybody had, and we had what happened to them and, cause I didn't keep all that stuff when I got off. All, all the members up there on that, had every board, Adam come up with it, plan commission, zoning board, park board, aviation board, had who was on the board, what their terms was, and what, who appointed them. If it was the county appointed, the library board, the school appointed them, the, you know, the county appointed them, or if they were appointed by the president of the town council or council in a whole. So what happened to those, I don't know, but each and every one had one of those. And it would always cut up the date. I will dig through some of my stuff, cause I've still found one of mine for the zoning board, but it doesn't say if, who is, who appoints, if it's the county president or the council in a whole, so.
Yeah, I think we just, here recently came, sent emails to you on the boards.
Yeah, I was working there.
So to keep everybody updated on the process and, you know, who's on what board and all the members and when their terms are up.
But if you, you either want to reappoint or you can reappoint us, like me, I reappoint me and then appoint Brad tonight, I mean, I don't see an issue with that. If it comes with the council or council president, either one, I mean.
Is there a conflict with me being on EDC board and that too?
No, cause you're not an elected official.
Rick, my best recollection of that is I think they're nearly always appointed by the president.
A lot of them are.
I, I feel fairly confident. So I, if we want to appoint Rick and Brad tonight, I would feel more.
And Chris.
And Chris, I would feel more confident that it, it would come from the president. Cause I think that's probably gonna be, I, I feel, I just feel that that has always been.
Yeah.
The president that's appointed.
That's way too important too.
Brad, are you aware of commitments and that, have discussions?
It's very briefing, Rick. It's not a regular scheduled meeting, is it?
No, it's not. It's the only time that the zoning board meets is when someone has asked for a zoning variance of a, of a property. So we're not, like the park board meet once a month or, you know, the council meet once a month or whatever. It's just as needed.
How often is that, Rick?
I think last few. I think last year we had like five or six meetings for zoning variance requests.
Brad, I was on it for four years and never went, never had one either. I mean, it just, there never was one in the four years, I mean, so.
I'm, I'm good with it.
Well, then I think we'll go ahead and appoint Rick Cole, Brad Robinson, and Chris Senova to the, uh, BZA board.
And I know we were talking about, and emailing our partner Chris about maybe attending one of the plan commission meetings, since we, a partner, you know, report to the plan commission about working on it and going over the zoning issues to see if there's any changes need to be made to those, and to make sure that everyone's on board with what's expected of the zoning, um, board, and, so.
And Rick, your recollection of the BZA, is that staggered terms? I know that's the way it is on, on the park.
I think it is.
So you'll probably have a stagger, have a way to get a stagger.
Anything else? Uh, next regular council meeting will be Monday, June, uh, June third at six thirty again. If they have a chance to review the claims.
Move to approve.
The property, move in the segments, approve the claims and present, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
So probably move in segments and return, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?